Supervisory Union Board of Directors to order. Item number one on the agenda are public comments. There any public comments, go to the reaction button, raise your hand, and I'll unmute you. I'm not seeing any raised hands. Okay, and then there's been a request to take the agenda out of order so that Council will be, Dina Atwood can talk to us about the legislative update, she has to go to another meeting.
Make a motion?
Make a motion?
Yeah.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you, Dina.
Whoop, hi, give me a second. Sorry. Whoop. I had one over there. There we go. All right.
Hey, everybody.
Um, I'm just gonna talk very quickly, there's some stuff that's still up in the air, I think, for those of you who are keeping track, the legislature was back in session for a veto, override sort of session today, because there were an incredible amount of bills that were vetoed by the governor. And so they are dealing with that from the budget to a multitude of different things. So there are things, like I said, that are still up in the air. There are a couple that have passed that that we can talk about, I think, however, to give you a comprehensive update of everything that's gonna, as my grandmother would have said, sugar out, would probably be in your July or your August meeting. I don't know if you guys hold a July meeting. But S 138, the school safety bill passed that requires just a heads up, because I know a couple of you sit on the Policy Committee. It requires adoption of a policy mandating a biannual, that an adoption of a policy which discusses the mandate, mandating biannual response drills. You also are going to be obligated to adopt it what they call an access control and visitor management policy. And also, and I don't know if any of your teams in your, fit the criteria for if you have a behavioral threat assessment team. But if you use one, which my understanding is there are some school districts that use behavioral threat assessment teams, which have undergone some training in terms of using a threat assessment that is used by the Secret Service, which is coming off of some training from AOE and Avender, I think it's the Marguerite Group. But if your school is using a behavioral threat assessment team, you're gonna have mandatory data reporting requirements to AOE about that, and that comes off of Senate Bill 138. H 165, which is the universal school meals bill passed without the governor's signature, approximately $29 million, I think, has been earmarked from the Education Fund for that. Way back when, early in in the time, and we've already utilized it in some of your annual meetings, but it will exist also for next year's annual meetings, is H 42, which did the changes that had been done initially during the pandemic. But they also extended them out to July 1st of 2024 for annual meetings that can be held where you can change, if you have Australian balloting, where you can, where you can change, excuse me, from a floor vote to Australian balloting without having that be put before your vote, your voters the year before, and how you can handle meetings done electronically, including annual meetings. So that is gonna stay into effect until July 1st of 2024. So that's gonna cover your next annual meeting that are gonna come up in March of 2024. The budget bill was vetoed, I was just trying to see before I got on here whether or not they had dealt with the budget bill. I don't see that they have. So there is that issue as well. H 461, which was the miscellaneous bill, did a couple things. One is a data management system that the state of Vermont had identified for all districts to use. It's a financial data management system, has been permanently suspended from having to be implemented. There have been some changes to the home study provisions, including providing notice to AOE by parents about whether or not they're withdrawing their student, quote unquote, from home study. That's been an area of some confusion where kids have been enrolled in home study. Oh, thank you, Jim. Jim just found the update on that, okay, so sorry. But parents have not, there's been some confusion, and we haven't necessarily always known when students have stopped participating in a home study program. Also, another addition to the home study provisions is that there's now a process for a parent to seek a waiver of certain requirements, curriculum requirements due to religious conviction. They also made some changes to petition requirements for unified union school district elections. So petitions for if you're gonna be running for an open position. It currently is at 60 voters, now it's gonna be at 60 voters or 1% of legal voters, whichever is less. And Jim, thank you, found that the Vermont Legislature extended the emergency housing, so the motel housing, that's not really an education specific, specific bill, but it does impact some of the students who are in your districts. And they also overrode the state budget veto. And that's from Vermont Public Radio, so there's that. I'm looking to see what else we have. Those are pretty much, I mean, there wasn't, at the setting of the homestead property tax yield and and non-homestead property tax rate, H 492 happened. So H 494, which was the the budget bill, is the one that they just overrode the governor's veto on. There have been some changes made to childcare and early education. They're not huge changes, other than the concept of, in terms of looking at and establishing a committee to provide data and to basically do a study of whether or not pre-K should be a full day, as opposed to, right now, as I think you're all aware of, that the the public school part is 10 hours a week. So that's me saying that real fast to get you all, but there's still a lot that they're gonna be going through. And I'm trying to see what else we have here. The policy, I think some of you for the the policy on the school safety, I think your boards have been moving towards it. That's the one, I think, that irrationally has to be adopted by August 1st. So I think, Jim, unless you tell me differently, you have sort of moved forward with your boards.
We're not gonna make that August 1st deadline. It's gonna be a couple of weeks into August, and as you and I discussed, there isn't a penalty for that, we will have them enacted before school starts. They'll be warned, they will all be warned by that date.
Right.
But not adopted.
Yeah, and and I have to say, I don't think you're gonna be the only only district that's, or issue that has that issue. The notification went out very late to school districts, and it and it was passed, the school safety bill was passed very late in the session.
I know both associations, the Superintendent Association, Schoolwork Association, is asking for like the September 30th date, I believe, so that would allow them to enact it, but it didn't change, as far as I am, it's the August 1st.
Okay. Because I mean, that got signed on May 30th, so if you think about what your posting and warning requirements are for policies, that's very difficult to turn something around that quick, especially since I don't know how you, how all of your boards handle this, but there are issues that I deal with that their boards don't, they try not to do a July meeting.
We have no July meeting scheduled at this time.
Okay. So that's just very quickly, some of the things that are sitting out there. Like I said, I think we're we're looking at probably early, hope, well, I mean, hopefully by the end of this week, everything will be clear. And we'll have an idea of everything, but it's gonna take a while, I think, to go through and see what has been, what what vetoes have been overridden. So I don't know. I can provide, Jim, if you want, for your boards, when the the special session of the legislature is done. We can sort of do a bullet point out to your boards, if that makes sense.
Yeah, as you know, we'll get something from the VSA, we'll get an update, let's wrap up. And I think the Schoolwork Association does that also, but then if you could look at those two and give a a final report, maybe in August on, particularly if there's something you see that will really impact us that we need to be aware of.
I mean, one of the things that is out there, and it's been out there, and it's not something from this last session, is that I think all of your board members are aware of it, is that as of July 1st, the remainder of the Rule 2200 about independent schools is going into play, it had been pushed off for this past school year. So that deals with students and being placed in independent schools who may have a need for specialized instruction is a big part of that, and it sets out a whole procedure. I know I've talked to, the North Bennington Board has been very gracious and has invited me to, I think I've spoken to them about it twice, and so they seem to be very much so up on that. But that one, the changes also to the eligibility criteria and the removal of adverse effects for some disability categories for special ed eligibility goes into effect on July 1st as well. I don't know if there are any questions.
Any questions for Dina? Thank you, Dina.
Okay.
We'll look forward to some more things as they sugar out, as you said.
Not a problem. Other than that, you all have a wonderful remainder of June and and July. And I'll see you all probably in August.
Thank you.
All right, have a great night.
Jim, anything more for your?
Yeah, the only thing that I was gonna mention is, I mean, hiring is certainly what's gonna keep us busy this summer, but we're in the process. I want this board aware, every summer we do a two-day training, we call it an administrative retreat. We take principals, vice principals, directors, assistant directors, myself and the assistant superintendent, we do two days training. Dina will be part of that, she usually is every this year, what I've asked her to specifically address this year is, because we've had some stags with it, suspension training and the changes in the laws for there, and bring all our staff up to date, so that will be one part of it. We do have a theme for it, it's slowing the pace to support good decisions. And we also have a, an outside vendor who comes this year, was recommended by Renee Gordon, someone you've seen at the Business Officials Annual Conference, who talks about organizational skills and building capacities within organizations, but at the same time recognizing, take care of everybody too. So that'll be one of the mornings. There will be a segment on policy and administration updates, Dina will be happy with that. So that that is August 7th and 8th, so we're we're in the process of planning that and lining up who our keynote will be. Pretty much already put together. In compliance to me, like confirming the location. Other than that, I will be busy, you know, but I have two elementary principals I need, one elementary vice principal, I still need one elementary vice principal, an assistant director for student support services. So plus all the other positions. And we, you know, if you've been on this board long enough, you know that we have an 8 to 10% turnover rate, which is actually, believe it or not, below the national average in education. But when you consider how many employees we are, that is somewhere in the vicinity of 80 people, that 80 to 100 people that need to be onboarded every summer. And the last day for students was Friday, the last day for our support staff was today, and the last day for teaching staff is tomorrow.
Any questions? Any questions for?
Very happy beginning to the end of the year.
Item three on the agenda is operations, there's two, two parts of that. First one is contract for food service. All of these here.
So, hey friends, how are you? I'm sorry for the clapping. So we are completing our first year of food service contract with APEHOPE. We did, we did it out this time last year, or it was, it was then starting last year. And all the procurement was price, was to provide pricing for five years. So this is, this is already been bit out, we've already gone through all the hoops, and it's all USDA approved. But to execute it, I need your approval to move forward.
Sorry, so the annual, no, five-year contract?
So it's, it's, I'm sorry, it's a five-year bidding window, they gave us pricing for five years, and the contract, contract just needs to be updated annually to reflect the pricing that they provided to us.
And that comes in the form of this board approving, action by this board?
Yeah.
This is a recommendation issue in the back.
Yeah, the recommendation part, just need to, along with Renee Gordon, to execute the contract.
Any?
I'll move there.
Oh, second.
Are any discussion or questions?
Say, well, you're gonna have to do that again this year.
Yeah, it's a huge.
It's a huge gap. So, Nick.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. And the transportation contract, item B.
So yeah, our contract, uh, we do four, ran out. And so we went out to bid, we drafted an invitation to bid for our transportation. We advertised both publicly and invited bidders. We did only receive one bid, and that is with Dufer and the existing pressing company. So we followed all the rules, but we got not a lot of competition. So we, I would like to afford with procurement of, or I would like to ask for you guys to authorize Renee Gordon to execute the Dufer contract as well.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Just always a 3.4% increase, is this pretty typical?
Yeah, it's little cost escalations, we, we we, we had back and forth this year about a fuel escalation, because as you know, fuel is, and because there's no clause in the contract, we said, so sorry, but that's a new problem. And so that the the increase is not surprising. Yeah, and just we, this is for the Mount Anthony District, the elementary district, and providing the element with numbers, but this does not.
That was an alter to the, to the bid, but not, not gonna be executed at this time.
Any questions? For the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And any abstentions?
Thank you very much.
You got it, thank you. Item four on the agenda is policies, within the policies part of the packet. Today we have 2401, which is access control and visitor management, which is AOE required. We have 2470, fire and emergency preparedness drills, those were the two that Dina picked.
Yeah, I have a question there.
The faculty's gonna do it more than I can, so.
I'm just gonna read through them, then we'll begin. We have 3100, which is transportation. We have 4001, which is employees, and we have 4003 bullying prevention for, and bullying prevention adults. So item, or, no, A, which is 2401, Dina, would you?
I would like to move it. We can have a description. This 2401, access control for visitor management is up for warning. This is one of the, Dina talked about the that we need to put into place in addition to what we have in place. And so this one, including the other policies that we had currently have in place along with this, and we needed to move them along as best possible. The language was straightforward and with recommendations, with administrative regs that specifically gave spell out what the superintendent needed to do and with the site, by definition, most.
Okay, so Leon has moved 2401, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And are there any questions?
So this, this is in compliance to what the government just passed today, this is what, this is the exact one, right?
The, I didn't know what the dental governor did today, but this was one.
I did previous, yeah.
What the governor, yeah, he didn't veto this one, so.
Yeah, this, this was put into works several weeks ago.
And basically means lock the doors where you're not in, back here.
Yeah.
And keep a good log of who comes and goes.
Yeah.
That's right, and and we were doing forward of that, but this one here came out with specifically. Great things.
So did we get a second?
Yes.
Second, Jeff. Jeff, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, B, within policies, 2470.
That's by emergency, uh, preparedness, the drills, and, and this is the second one that Dina talked about that we were asked to to move fairly rapid with, in terms of approving this, and so this is up for warning. And and here it talks about the the spell out what the site is and what we needed to be doing and have an alternative method to make sure that everybody understands what they need to be doing in terms of fire prevention, emergency readiness, drills. And the main thing in here is is making sure that it's spelled out a time in which we need to notify parents and that's our ability that we're gonna have that drill.
Thanks, Chris. Can we get a motion for that?
That was me moving it.
That was you moving it, okay.
I'll second it.
Stay consistent. We'll stay, stay consistent. All those in favor?
Oh, let's talk about it. Was this part of the policy that came out last year, like they got it from the state last summer?
We referenced our current policies in there. We didn't change the ones we got, so the ones of the last year and so forth, but still reference it and it, and in place in addition to the things that they are now asking us to to do here in terms of.
Read the policy from the state last year, Leon, you know, they encouraged, like, you know, they have the ALICE, which is the alert, lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate. But they also encouraged schools to come for the policy, adopting run high-fight methodology in response to violent intruders. Do we do that?
Do we do it?
Yeah. Do you have a policy?
The drills, but it's weak.
And it's all pointing through the S S U safety coordinator, Vic.
All right. What do you, just know what that means, run high-fight? Because I know at the hospital we do all that, once that train, run high-fight, this is the policy of what to do. I just wanted to make sure that Carolyn knows what to do, if that's what we're doing.
That training is coming?
Okay.
With, through Vic.
Okay. Any other questions with regard to 2470? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And are there any abstentions? Okay, moving on to the next one. 3100, transportation.
That's transportation, it's a policy, we had some other information that was updated in Arlington and Sandgate, so working with that particular policy. It's a particular ruling, 9300, applies to all of the transportation, the boats that allow for extraordinary schools, we wanted, the main thing, it points out that the school districts are responsible for their costs, not the supervisory unit.
Leon, was that you moving it?
I'm moving it, yeah.
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? And any abstentions? Next is D 4001, harassment of employees.
Harassment of employees, and employees unlawful harassment if they were reading the topic on the, on the policy out there. So you would have saw it that way, and the information that were changed in here is highlighted in yellow and gave the definition of what harassment means and so forth, and a strong statement about the board and the school district not tolerating that and so forth. So I would ask, it's about eight pages long, a lot of different things in there, but I would ask that we accept this, this warning of this policy.
If you may, on, can we get a second?
I'll second it.
And are there, is there any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Most of the things that we took out, I see that were replaced in yellow, but I'm wondering why the false complaint was taken out, I don't see it referenced anywhere else.
Or is that located just for?
I couldn't.
At what line number?
It's a 13 on page 7, false complaint, number four. I just didn't see it referenced anywhere within the highlighted yellow parts, I could miss it, but.
There was some information, I even good faith, now the gates. About about that, I'm just, I can't get the whole.
But B, we wanted to.
Investigation.
Yeah, I saw that, but I didn't see.
Somebody lies about.
Yes, it's, it's the way. That's lawful harassment can include. I'm looking for, that's what it defines. See what the wording is sent here in terms of. It's not explicitly. Eight, five of eight, when it talks about the duties of the investigation, it's not clear. If you would read that, the district is is committed to taking action if the information regarding potential unlawful harassment is learned, even if the even if the aggressive employees, a grievous employee. Even if the aggressive employees, a grievous employee does not wish to, to uh to file a formal complaint. So it's been, I think he was talking about retaliation.
No, I was talking about false complaint.
Yes, it says we gotta do it anyway and it says along that line.
Item three covers that to a certain extent, so. Uh, which is page six, item three. If after investigation, the allegation is found not to have been substantiated, if it's. Show be informed of the right to contact any of the state or federal agencies.
That, that's, I think the false complaint deals with if, if I say, you know, you did something bad.
Right.
And I end up lying, either just during actions before, that's what it says on the bottom. Or the kids, the students being expelled if they're lying.
That's line, that's three in terms of the investigation. And so it goes on and I think the cover gets what you just said here.
It doesn't say something, but just declaring actions if you lie.
No, it, it didn't, but it says the accused or the complainant or any witnesses shall be uh won against any retaliation on that line is what it said. And if after the investigation, the allegation is found not to have been substantiated, the complainant shall be informed of the rights to uh contact another agency if we felt like they needed to go somewhere else to do something else.
What do you do about the kid who lies, about the teacher?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, when that kid couldn't get expelled.
Yeah.
Well.
And that's what's down the hole. I mean, that's what.
A little harder than.
I mean, it was not too long ago that this, this went in here and it was put in place because of exactly what they saw.
That was what you want here. It's, it's, it's hearing people from.
This is adults, not students.
I understand, but it's, it's. This is, I understand that it's still the same thing to go, but I, you know, I understand it, that.
So I don't have notes on what the strikeouts are from. I don't know if that
Yeah.
came from our attorney or came from the moral policy. Uh, I, I can't guarantee it.
But I, I, I do know that, that what you're saying, if somebody will make a false complaint and, and, and you can't just say, I'm gonna.
Yeah. It's like, and say, oh, whatever, you know.
It, it defeats the purpose of being open for everybody to be able to.
Is this something that we want to table and get, get more answers on?
I, I don't think we need to table it. It's warned.
Please, so by the time you get to adopt, you could have that answer, have the answer.
Yeah, so maybe look into something if somebody accuses somebody falsely and it comes known that they did it. With ill, intent, sorry, ill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then what's a disclaimer action for that individual?
Well, I, I, I know that we don't really want it. I mean, we can go back and have a discussion on that and that's what you're asking here. When disciplinary action, we're gonna put against somebody if they made a complaint and find out that it may not be true. What are we gonna do to them? We shouldn't be trying to do anything because we want to encourage people.
But if somebody does that, retaliation.
Exactly.
Well, that retaliation talks about, and it says retaliation in here, but we're talking about somebody making a complaint and it's trying out to be not true.
Uh, what if they do the complaint
If they.
with intent to get somebody fired and it comes out that they lied under that pretense.
Which is different, I guess, because, because there's many allegations that may not be
True.
true, but it wasn't with, you know, malicious intent that it was.
But that line I striked out said there's disclaimer action for those individuals. So what happened that, you know?
So I would suggest if you do want it, so the process keeps going.
Yeah.
And at the next, you know, you, you have the, the ultimate representative that the uh, the policy committee is sitting here, so.
Fair. Uh, so do we have a, a motion to warn? Yes. Leon, we don't make that.
I second it, and then we're just, now we're going.
Now we're going, send this right now.
We'll just have that conversation where you come back, but I in terms of all clarity for that, but I definitely don't think we ought to be going down that avenue anymore. That's why we couldn't.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Okay, uh, last on this list is E, 4003, bullying and prevention, bullying prevention adults.
I'll move that. That's policy number 4003, bullying and uh discrimination of prevention. And so in this particular policy.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Okay, I go, Leon.
Uh, discrimination, uh, be it intended or unintended is equally treated of the, uh, equally treated of persons for, for reasons which has nothing to do with uh uh legal rights or their ability was, was added in here, but mainly we talked about what discrimination was and the definition, intention or unintentional discrimination to try to define and make sure everybody knew what's on stage, but that's the biggest thing in here, but and they have definitions for all of those, so. The terms that uh affect the items that were altered into this policy.
Can we have a motion and a second? Any further questions or discussion?
I think this, you know, here, if you look at page four, the bottom four, like line three. Then you get your ties against employee. Uh, never mind, I'll be quiet.
That's, well, that's the word retaliation.
Yeah.
That's, we already got that addressed everywhere. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, Ross, I think that. Okay.
Again, we, we want to encourage people to come forward. And that's a positive thing.
Any other questions or comments? All right, um, all those in favor of moving 4003? This is, plus aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Item five on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is in the packet and consists of minutes, warrants, leaves of absence, retirements, resignations, and nominations. Uh, if there isn't any opposition, I uh, would like to move them all together.
I'll make a motion to move consent agenda. As everything.
I was seconded. I did, I mean, in, in India with a comment, that's all.
Yeah.
In terms of resignations, I mentioned earlier, we do have more than worth 29 years in the district and resigned and we need to.
Rec, you'd like to recognize them?
Recognize them and make sure we understand whether that's a retirement or whether it's I, I read the letter that says that they were leaving, but I think that should have been a retirement.
They could have started at 20 and, and convicted 9 now, so.
Yeah.
Awesome. Uh.
We'll recognize their length of service and service.
No, that's a good, that's a good point. And that's you, right? Clerk?
Yeah, clerk.
You're the clerk.
That's what I said.
That's you. Susan, I'm getting confused with the other clerk. Susan or Katie who worked in your. Get you the information. And they have a warrant to pass on to you all, sign it if you move down.
Should we need to vote on the?
Need, need to vote uh on the consent agenda. We have a motion to, I don't, did we get a second?
I second.
You second?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? And are there any abstentions? So we will sign this and then those who are remote, you'll get it electronically to sign. Uh, and we've already done item six on the agenda, which was the superintendent's report. So uh, item seven is committee assignments. The two that are on here for discussion tonight, I didn't get anybody sending me emails saying that they were, had a burning desire to be on a committee, though I did talk with both Ray and Nicole, who I believe had expressed an interest in continuing with the superintendent evaluation committee. Um, are there any other folks who would be interested in, in that?
I actually told you last meeting that I'd be interested in that.
That's Wendy, that's right. So there's, there's three votes.
If I had to pick between finance and the other one, I'd take the other.
Well, I don't think we have to have, I don't think every person on this board has to sit on on one of the, on a committee.
Okay.
Right.
Right, usually one representative from each of the sending committee, building committee. So we'd have somebody from the village, I mean, from uh Prudential City, um, Ray, Nicole, Ray, Colton, Wendy, with, Wendy, with M A U, M A U. So someone from your elementary.
Elementary.
For the superintendent?
Yeah.
So I can sit on it.
Wendy, did you want to speak?
No, I'm fine. I, I just, I was interested in, in participating in that committee um when
Yep.
I'd never heard anything back from anyone, so.
Scott's got you on it.
Great, thanks.
Got you on it. Uh, and so, but we still need an E S D rep, which, um, where? Oh, I'm, oh. You're on.
The finance, you've not, you're not gonna, you, you're not gonna meet yet, so.
You got time?
You got time. But you, but if your people want to be on and out.
Sure, Renee would like to know. I would like to sit on, I would like to be a part of the finance committee. Um, I know that. Representing the superintendent district.
I think.
Ele- elementary.
Yeah.
Hmm? No, you don't want to be on. I got you on, and superintendent.
You do?
Hmm.
I said I would be on, but you have Wendy Marie on there.
Oh, yeah, so you don't need.
So, so then you got one from every committee now?
Okay. So I think it's, since I just want to make sure we've, we've, no, Ray's not here, so he, he may come back and say that he would like to do something different, but at this time we have Ray, Nicole, Wendy, and Jeff on the superintendent evaluation committee. Um, and then for the finance committee at this time, we've got me. Yeah.
Well, to do the policy.
Oh, you're doing policy.
You bring everybody out.
That's, that is the third. There's the policy.
Okay, okay, finance.
Yeah, so.
He's on the policy from the, from another committee. You know, we're, you know, maybe.
This, this committee does not really appoint somebody to the policy because then it throws off the balance.
Throws it off from it, right.
Yeah, but there is a, and, and Ray is too.
Uh, no.
He expressed that, she's come, but the public meetings, anybody can come to it.
Right, yeah. Each board was sending three representative, uh, I don't want to climb, but they haven't really showed up yet.
That's who's on your committee.
I'll be showing up, but I was trying to give somebody else a second.
Okay, so we've got a number of people who, who we can, that are not here tonight, that we can potentially tap on the shoulders for more of the budget.
Yeah.
And we can have that, we've got time for that.
All right, that gets intense December, January, possibly November, but never earlier than that.
And then there also uh will be opportunity for, well, so are each board represented? Yes, so we're set there.
Yeah.
On this, yeah. Evaluation, okay. Um, chairs report, I don't have much to report. I just wanted to make sure we got those committee assignments done or more in process than they were. Um, next item on the agenda would be other. Any other business, any other topics?
Um, to that, the board said, I want to thank the teachers for their, and the staff, but it's like office and schools, they're hardworking this year. It's first year back fully in school with all the kids and it changes and they did well.
Yeah, we said that in the last meeting, but um definitely want to reiterate it, reiterate it. Lot of appreciation for all, all the work that they've done.
Well, deserve a break.
Okay. Um, and then item 10 on the agenda is just an FYI that the budget status report and the student enrollment report well, it says to be posted, so that was not actually in the packet. It will be posted, yes?
I don't have it yet.
Um, and so that would exhaust the agenda. Make a motion, could bag it out, motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm sure not, we don't usually typically meet in July unless we need an emergency meeting and then we would the chairman and I would consult and if we need one, but right now I don't anticipate it to be in July meeting, we will be in August.
For this board. Yeah. Um, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Right, thanks, everybody.